May 8, 2023. Let the record reflect. We have a quorum of all three commissioners. I'd ask-
And one highway person.
Finally. Welcome. Welcome to the Commissioner's-
Glad you made it, Jim.
Should we have to go back and ask him to hurry up with our food?
Jim, since you've come, would you leave us in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is approval of executive session memoranda of today's date.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is approval of minutes of 4:24, 23. There was one slight revision on page 10 that's been corrected.
Some of-
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a very light agenda for you today. I have no road permits, no private traffic control permits, no vehicle exemption permits. I do have a list dated May 8, 2023 of bonds and letters of credit for acceptance. We recommend the board accept these bonds and letters of credit.
Some of-
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have no bonds and letters of credit for release, no agreements or supplements, no streets for acceptance, no... Oh, with concurrence with traffic study correspondence, we have items that were tabled at the last meeting. I would request that those stay tabled.
That would include 191st Street?
Yes.
Let's revisit that at the end of Highway. Do you want to do that?
Sure. The next item I have is a notice of lane closures, 146th Street and Allisonville Road. This is a complete list, as we know right now, of when we anticipate different restrictions and actual road closure dates for access roads and Allisonville Road as well. We recommend the board approve these closures.
Some of-
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have no public works quotation results, no official actions or miscellaneous correspondence. I believe Brad has the rest of the agenda.
I just got the Highway Annual Report. Actually, we're going to defer that to the next meeting. Tweaking what we're due to make it a little clearer in terms of our reporting. We'll have it at the next meeting.
Okay.
It's due by June 1st, I guess I have time to get that in. That's all I have. Other than remind you of tomorrow morning.
Stephen Nation.
Yep.
That's at 10:30?
Yeah, 10:30.
At the Camper.
Okay, I do want to clarify one thing, Jim. You indicated the closures, lane closures on 146th Street. When's the Allisonville Run, Road One? That, I missed that. I'll miss. Anticipated right down here?
Yes, and it is.
Road restriction. Do we have the closure on that?
I don't think the closure is on there.
Yeah, because that's next year here.
Okay, so this is June 2023.
This is 2023.
To clarify that, thank you.
And that's just the restriction.
Yeah. Right now, we're not closing. For 2023, we don't anticipate closing any road to through traffic. We will restrict to one lane?
Yes, so the main roads will have restrictions. Some of the subdivision roads entrances will have closures, but-
The main thoroughfares will remain-
146 and Allisonville.
Open, but probably not pleasant.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Town of Arcadia, Jonathan Albright. I'm not sure if we're here. Yep, good. We're a little ahead of time.
Thought you wanted to talk about 191st-
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go ahead and take you, and then we'll do... Go ahead. Nope, come on up.
Actually, it's the Town of Atlanta that we write this down. I apologize. I got thrown to you today instead of my partner, and so I'm not in my suit. The reason we come for you is that the Town of Atlanta has a piece of property that has been foreclosed upon in the town. That piece of property is encumbered with a tremendous amount of taxes. The county is authorized under 61.12467 to transfer. The county executive can transfer that asset to the Town of Atlanta or a nonprofit that it's choosing. The Town of Atlanta would like to have that transferred to them so that they could recoup the cost that it took to destroy the property that was there and to remediate the property.
Don't we have to go through a tax sale process first?
Yeah, and I haven't seen this too, so I don't know if you want to table us, and then Jonathan and I can circle back before next meeting and go for it there.
I believe what you're referring to is the process after it does not sell a tax sale.
Mike, when you say there's a foreclosure-
Yes.
Did the lender foreclose?
No, the Town of Atlanta-
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
Yeah, move it.
Thank you.
All right. So there's not a lender involved. It's taxes, it's the only lane-
Correct.
-against the property.
There are multiple lanes, including the lanes put onto it by the Town of Atlanta.
Have you gone through the court process of foreclosure?
We have.
Okay.
Would you send Connor or I a copy of that foreclosure order?
We have. We can.
Have you, do you have that card?
I can't send that to him.
All right.
I would just caution that this 24 section is in taxation and not particularly property taxation other than tax sale legislation, and I would be surprised if we did not have to go through the tax sale process prior to distributing property to an entity.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Is there motion? Go ahead.
There was a second thing that is not on here, but I would like to be added to the next meeting. The Town of Atlanta has two roads. I've spoken with the Highway Department that we would like to be, get the appropriate word here-
Relinguished.
Relinguished to the Town of Atlanta so that we could extend an annex to the south.
What are those roads?
They are Central Street from Monroe Street South, and then Jackson Street, and Moore Street.
You'll need to look into that, Con.
But I assume you can annex whether we have jurisdiction or not.
We need the roads. Currently, we, the Town of Atlanta does not have the roads in their inventory to-
Do you have contiguous properties?
We do not.
So I don't know if we can-
The statute, the statute says that if there's roads within your municipal entity and you annex those, then they are your exclusive jurisdiction. I applaud that, Phil.
Correct.
Now, the question is, are you talking about roads that are outside, are not contiguous to land in your city limits?
Correct.
So you're wanting to relinquish control of roads outside of, outside your... Man, is that right?
We would like the county to relinquish control to the Town of Atlanta, the roads on the south teardrop of the Town of Atlanta.
It sounds like strip annexation.
Yeah, I think my approach-
We've got-
These are the roads right here. These are their current corporate limits.
Yeah. So why, what I'm questioning is, why do you need a road to do that?
See, I don't, I don't think you-
You would see them just annexed.
If you open land on the side-
You could just annex that if they wanted to.
The only, okay. Are you trying to only take certain parcels?
No, we want to take the entire, the entire strip right through that.
It might be helpful if you had your town attorney contact us or contact our attorney to talk that through.
With a map?
Yeah.
He has a map.
Yeah. So we'll-
I do not want me right now, just a second.
Yeah. Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah. No, it just, make sure we're on the same page.
I was, I was, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to Highway because I jumped off by mistake. You wanted to talk about the tabled items. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take off the table for 191st Street discussion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I've spent a lot of time out there this weekend at the different places and responded or going by the places that had sent emails and sent... There are some dangerous places there, but I still maintain it has nothing to do particularly with our speed limit as much as it has to do with people maintaining the speed. There's one driveway in particular east of where the curve is that if you come out of that driveway, you cannot see over that hill. But we can reduce the speed limit by 10 miles an hour, and it's not going to make any difference. I mean, the driveway's not where it should be to begin with. The last person that sent a thing that you, the Highway Department forwarded to us, that's right by where the curve is. There is not an issue there. There's no hills, there's no anything. I do think it's an enforcement issue. We could, I do think it's exacerbated by the closing of 32 for so long. You know, there's a lot more. I mean, I was going over there the other day, and I had my speed control of 50, and the person behind me was within four inches of my bumper all the way because he thought I was going too slow. So I really believe it's an enforcement issue, but do you have any comment, Sheriff?
We have been out there enforcing it pretty actively.
You were. We fully, let me say. One day I was out there, and there was four cars out there. But I mean, is there a way we could maybe take a, one of our cars that we're not using and park it in different places for a while, just for visibility?
Yeah, we could absolutely do that.
Until 32 opens up?
Sure. Yeah, we could do that.
And then just, we talked about it a little bit at lunch, and-
Sure.
We're just brainstorming. We don't want some young person, particularly, or old person either, but I could see if I had a daughter or a young person coming out of that driveway, I'd be scared to death every time they look at my house.
Yeah, there are definitely some-
It's where those hills are, you know, after you pass the curve.
Driveways that are difficult to see.
From there to 32 seems to be the problem area.
Are you enforcing aggressive driving?
We are. I mean, we've been out, like I said, out there pretty actively. We've stopped several cars. We've written tickets. From our guys that are out there, it would help them if the speed limit were a little lower to be able to enforce it. They don't feel comfortable writing tickets for five miles an hour over the speed limit, for instance. But, I mean, they are making traffic stops. They are writing tickets.
And the point is, a little catch 22, because the Highway Department did a study on it, and they're traveling 62, the average person's traveling 62 miles an hour. Well, if we lower the speed limit, that exacerbates that problem, according to them.
No, I understand what you're saying.
And we had, it was at 45 for years. Then they petitioned us because they said it was too slow, and the residents wanted 55. So we moved to 55, and now they're wanting to back down to 45.
No, I understand what you're saying. We, I just want to reiterate that we are and have been out there actively enforcing the speed limit.
Yeah, I was able to pull some of the data on, from last year, how many accidents there's been, how many traffic stops, and I was able to get that, all that documentation over the last year. Three accidents last week on 191st Street. I think Commissioner Dillinger is right in regards to how State Road 32 has been closed for a while, and I think that a lot of people, when they see 32 is closed, they're diverting on there and they're speeding. And, but as I said before, I think the issue, in my opinion, is between Cynthia and Prairie Baptist is where I have concern, only because there's a lot of hidden drives that are there and people coming over a hill, and especially pulling out a horse trailer or any type of farm equipment. You're going to have somebody come. It's scary to pull out. I don't know what the, how to rectify that, but I think maybe at least until 32 opens up, I'd really like to see more enforcement if there's any way possible we can.
Well, and the fatality that happened last week, that was west of the area you're talking about. That had nothing to do with bad road conditions or hills or anything else. The guy just passed on the W yellow line and-
Well, I have a question for Highway. Is it, is it possible and/or appropriate to do a temporary speed reduction, given the current closures, for 45 miles an hour during that stretch identified by Commissioner Harebrandt? I mean, it's-
From Cynthia and Road 32.
Really, from Prairie Baptist to Cynthia, I think is probably would be-
I mean, given the circuit, to me, it's, you've got probably a lot of aggressive drivers because they're frustrated and perhaps weren't anticipating a closure that is primarily due to the road closures of the state that we can't control. So this is a temporary situation. Could we impose a temporary speed limit in the stretch that's been identified and perhaps hopefully verified by the accident report locations during this time period?
I mean, we can do whatever you tell us to do.
What do you recommend? You know, the last person that wrote into you guys that you forwarded us, that guy wanted to shut off all the traffic from Appell and Anderson over to Noblesville. Well, that's not going to happen. That was ridiculous, but-
Kind of a pleasing settlement.
I guess he wanted to use his own personal driveway or something. I don't know.
I mean, we, we are taught to follow the manual and uniform traffic control devices on how we, how we set speed limits and-
Well, I think that conditioned with that is that if people safely traveled that speed, it's becoming apparent that people are not safely traveling at the normal speed of 62.
Well, and the thing is, if you lower the speed limit, you have to have enforcement.
And I think we have a commitment from our-
With that enforcement-
Yeah.
If we had enforcement, then 55 doesn't make any difference.
Yeah.
Because it is safe to travel that road at 55, as you have found in your engineering studies.
Yeah, and it is, I mean, it all comes down to, we can't, we can't just lower and put up a sign and say it's all-
You can't legislate common sense.
Cannot.
And a lot of this is a common sense issue of slowing down when appropriate and that kind of thing.
Yes. I mean, so it's, you know, and we've spent quite a bit of time looking at different publications, trying to figure out things we can do to help calm the traffic, get more compliance. Unfortunately, the things that are, would probably be the most effective speed cameras are, we can't, we can't use those in any event.
No, but they did put a speedometer-
A speed trailer.
Trailer at there.
Yeah.
Or you guys-
And, you know, some of the other research that, you know, we've looked at in the last week, I mean, there was a nice table that showed what the, you know, okay, we had increased enforcement, and based on the duration of the enforcement, how much of a halo effect, you know, a lingering effect that we get on speeds. And it was very disappointing seeing that table, because if you had six days of continuous enforcement, you got four days after that of people remembering it.
Yeah. I will tell you, though, I commend Sheriff Quakenbush because after we talked about that the last meeting, the enforcement was out there, and I heard from a lot of the folks in between there, and they were pleased to see somebody out there watching what was going on. And there was quite a few-
But I think he has a point of them giving the ticket on four and five miles over speed limit. That's just not-
I understand that.
Good policing.
I wonder what it would cost to put up some of these, like, more permanent speed signs, or if they would even be effective in that area. Like, you see coming-
Yeah.
Getting out of Cicero for instance.
That's a good, that's a good point. I think that it would make some of the people in between Prairie Baptist and Cynthia feel a little bit better.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a good thought or not, but just-
I think we, I think one time I got the prices, and it was like $3,500. That's been several years ago personally.
Let me ask you something. You know, there are a couple drives, one in particular I'm thinking of, after you go through the curve, their drive is just, after you go over the hill, I would not want to be pulling out there.
I pull out.
There's some kind of a mirror thing that can be installed somewhere where they can see over the crest of that hill?
You have hidden drive signs.
Well, we have hidden drive signs out there. I've spent a lot of time out there.
Yes, there is.
I don't know that-
I mean, I don't know how to correct that person's problem other than a mirror or them moving their driveway, because it's in a very, very dangerous place.
Yeah, and with all the, all of the trees along there, I don't know that we could, you could put one up where you'd have any vision.
Even if you could see, the cars are moving-
So fast.
-fast enough that by the time they perceive and react, they would, there's still be an issue.
Some of the things that, you know, just brainstorming is, but like, the intersection conflict warning system that we've talked about using other places, there may be a way to do something like that where there's a detector, and if there's traffic coming, there's a flashing sign in front of them or something like that to let them know. But I don't know-
Well, most of the enforcement, I've seen out there, one day I saw four. They had one pull over, one was running radar, and two was moving up and down.
Everybody was in the tree.
But they didn't see any west of the curve. Everything was east of the curve. I'm sorry, everything was west of the curve. Nothing was east of the curve to 32. And that's where the big issue is.
Are you talking about Prairie Baptist is what you're talking about?
No. Well, is Prairie Baptist where it curves like this? Yeah.
You gotta have it.
From there-
They're west of there, right?
No, we're getting one.
No, from there east to 32.
East, yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem area. The rest of it, it's easy to speed on the rest of it because it's pretty straight and flat.
Yeah.
But the issue he's talking about is east-
Yeah, between there and Cynthia.
Prairie Baptist, yeah, right.
Yeah.
And I didn't see any patrols there. Everything was west of there.
It's the topography there.
Yeah, they're, they're all, they're all along there. I mean, that's, you may not have seen them at a particular time you're out there, but they are. And a lot of times they're making those traffic stops in a more straight area for safety purposes, even though they might have clocked somebody in the other area.
Sure.
It's like they want to make sure that they, they are seen and safe as well.
You know, I don't know what else we can do. I certainly don't want anyone else killed out there. I certainly don't want some teenager pulling out of a drive, but I don't know what, I don't know what else or how to handle it.
It's in the NPO's planning area, so-
It's what?
It's in their planning area, NPO's planning area. So you could apply for some kind of funding, but you're looking at five, six years out, even if you got-
I think the problem will somewhat take care of itself. As soon as they finish those two bridges they've been working on for two years.
That's about mid-July.
Well, the thing is-
I don't know what's taking them so long.
With the growth in the county, I mean, it's going to continue to have pressure on that road, I would presume. So I don't see a problem with applying. Have it penned and see if we can get money. Because you're right, ultimately, taking down that obstacle's the answer.
That doesn't, well, save speeding issue.
No.
It's the site issue.
Oh, that's great, that.
I mean, that is a, that's going to get a lot of traffic in the future, so it's-
Why don't we, at least until 32 opens up, if you could, maybe park a car that we're not using out there and move it ultimately?
We could definitely look at, look at that, and we'll continue enforcement out there.
I mean, if you remember up at Potter's Bridge, and we was having trouble up there, and we parked a car up there, and it pretty well cured the problem. If people see a comp car, they're going to slow down.
Sure.
Or they're going to roll the dice. Are you feeling lucky?
I think we could look also, I mean, if that traffic's going to continue, we might as well look at a study if it's five years out for funding-
Yeah.
-at least to have something and know what the issue is. Maybe it is that closure. I don't know, but it just seems to, that closing those bridges have really, I think-
Oh, it's, it's hurt.
Changed things.
Well, in the long term, it's just going to continue to carry traffic, so we might as well start looking.
Yeah.
When the, when there was only one bridge closed, the traffic had tripled. And now that both bridges are closed, the other routes that people have been taking, they can't get to.
They can't get to it anymore.
So now everyone's funneled into 191st Street because they ignore all the other signs.
And especially right there between the curve and 32.
Yeah. Probably not 100% fair comparison, but when there were, the speed limit was raised to 55, but two years prior to that, there were 19 crashes. After that, there were nine crashes. So after you raise the speed limit, the crashes went down, and that's because people were probably driving-
You had people driving too slow, and people not wanting to drive that slow, and they were passing them illegally and-
Frustration. And that's a caution about setting the speed limit lower than-
Right.
-what your study says. It's admirable. People aren't busy driving, and then you get disparity in speeds and emissions, so.
Okay. Well, do you want to do anything at this meeting or table it again?
I'd, I'd make a motion to, um, first and foremost, um, do a study on that corridor. And then also, um, if the sheriff could put some additional enforcement efforts out there, especially in between, between that, when that State Road Thirty-two opens out. That's what I'd make a motion to be able to, if we can do that.
Second.
Discussion. Additional discussion. From anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, is there any other highway business you want to consider? Moving on then, ISSD, Mr. Mertens.
Hello.
Hello.
Just got the one item today. It's a replacement for our UPS batteries here in the data center upstairs. Just asking you to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Ward, surveyor. Warhoover is representing Mr. Ward.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
This item was before you. Drainage board, it concerns the acquisition of the, uh, HABIC property for a direct regulated drainage reconstruction later this fall. At your drainage board, you recommended condemnation and now in your past years, commissioners would ask you to approve filing a domain action on this property.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Rushford, safety risk management.
Good afternoon. Today I bring you forward three items for consideration related to liability claims, just starting from the top of those. The first is from an incident that occurred on April thirteenth involving a highway vehicle, two thousand nineteen Ford Explorer. While conducting a field survey, a Hammond County employee struck a no passing zone while backing up on the pavement edge on Two Hundred Thirty-sixth Street. The damage total was five thousand five hundred twenty-two and there's no concerns of that vehicle being determined a total loss. So I am requesting permission to authorize the repairs.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the second item for consideration is from an incident that occurred on April second, twenty twenty-three involving the Hammond County Four-H Grounds Horse Complex during a severe thunderstorm. One of the four lights on one of the poles broke loose, loose at, uh, the horse complex, um, fell from the bracket, damaged the, um, the light, the bracket, uh, a vinyl fence below. And a concrete section. Uh, the estimated repair cost, seven thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars, and I am seeking your approval to authorize those repairs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The third and final item is from the incident that occurred April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, uh, involving a parks vehicle. While legally parked on Tenth Street, a county vehicle was struck by a private AM vehicle that was traveling northbound. The estimated repair cost is seventeen thousand six hundred fifty-two. There's no concern of that vehicle being a total loss, so I am seeking your approval to repair and issue.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I assume we'll be able to subrogate on this?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency management, Mr. Booker.
Mr. Booker, did you send me an email that woke me up at one-thirty Sunday morning?
Risk mana, or not risk management, I'm throwing Steven right at us. Uh, Ray, Ray Lording did. You can, you can unsubscribe from those.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like.
Yeah, I can't, but really, because I do need to know most of it.
Yeah. And find out if that tornado's headed to your house.
Yeah, this was severe thunderstorms.
Now, I have strict instructions. I'm supposed to go knock on the door and never know, so.
Gently.
Because I get them, me and I also get them from the airport authority, so I gotta look up twice.
What about me?
I agree with my, my partners in crime, um, to present to you, uh, the spec, the special event plan for the Four-H Fair. We have had several meetings starting back last year to work through some of the, the issues and those have included risk management. Kathy Williams has attended on behalf of Four-H Council and we've also had, um, Mr., or Superintendent Wood attend as well to help, uh, work through some of those issues. And so what we bring before you today is the base plan that, that we've created. And we've also worked through some of the, some of the things that were pointed out in the work session, the things of trying to address insurance issues. And, uh, Stephen has been instrumental in helping with the risk management side of that and helping kind of understand where we're at with the vendors. And making sure that we're getting all the, the appropriate insurance elements in place, where we've got better communication with, uh, Purdue Extension. And Susan, I'm not sure if there's anything else that you would like to cover, but we do have some areas that we're still working on addressing some of the responsibilities that, where those lie. And working with, uh, Superintendent Wood, but it's, of course, he's been extremely busy with some of the other projects. So we do need to get those down. We know that those parts of the plan are kind of a moving target, if you will, but as we get closer to the fair, we'll have those worked out. And make sure that we can, we keep a record of changes, just as we do with any of our emergency management plans. This plan does contain, um, information in it that's, that is, uh, I would, would ask to be kept confidential. And includes some of the emergency procedures and what to do if there's an incident. And also includes, um, personal identifiable information such as cell phone numbers and those such as those, that type of information. So it's best that it be kept confidential.
Highway, what, where will the Pleasant Street issue be at this time? Do you know?
Huh?
The pla, the project. The project, yeah.
They're not supposed to start until well after the fair.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
After the fair?
Oh, yeah.
Back to our, it won't be packed anything because of fair time.
It doesn't, they don't even put up a landing until the fall.
Okay.
So is, um, what's the correct site for the security issue, uh, non-disclosure of public records?
How about, it's, it's in the public records section. We'll get the audit in that section yet today.
Okay.
Well, you guys must be hanging out a lot because both of you when you were asked that question go.
Well, Connor didn't work this weekend and memorized all that stuff.
Okay. Was there a motion to, uh, treat this plan as exempt from public disclosure due to security issues?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to, um, accept this emergency plan in its draft form?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a date you're working toward to have this finalized? Because the fair's coming up.
It, we will continue to work on it almost up to the fair. And so one of the things that is included in the plan there in the second page is just a memorandum from the board, basically accepting the plan. And then our next step is to go through that, uh, plan approval implementation on page three where we obtained the signatures for the Four-H Council, Purdue Extension and the other folks. And then as we continue to work through the areas of responsibility, that's where we'll continue to, to make those updates and, and collect those in a record of change.
Well, I would suggest we would want a finalized plan by the first meeting of June, wouldn't you? So we're requesting you come up with a finalized plan by the first, for first meeting in June.
Okay.
So you have a date to work against, so we don't lose track of it?
We'll be happy to do that.
Okay. And do we vote on that? Acceptance?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
While they're here, can we talk about the issue? We were gonna talk on Four-H about the property.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
As you well know, your Extension Board and Four-H Board and every other board voted they didn't want to move the fairgrounds.
Farm Bureau.
Uh, Farm Bureau. And, uh, after a lot of consideration and, and listening to, uh, one of our counselors reasoning, which, you know, he was trying to do his best. We, I will make a motion to confirm that the fairgrounds will not be moved.
Second.
Discussion. The only thing that makes me a little sad about that decision is as we look at the thirty-one corridor in the Baker's Corner Sewer Planning. There's a lot of emphasis on ag, ag tourism, et cetera, which this would be a perfect fit. But to, to honor your decisions, I don't disagree, we've gotta get moving on it, but it does.
Well, if you, I sat in to their board meeting where they discussed this. And the, um, reasoning behind the Farm Bureau and the Extension Board of why it should stay in Noblesville. And the purpose of why that land was committed to Noblesville to begin with made a lot of sense. So without that background, I mean, certainly, I understand what you're saying, but it could, but the same thing, argument could have been made a few years ago when we were trying to move it up to Catehui to some degree.
No, I mean, that's.
So anyway, I think it's been a little unfair for this to be drug out as long as it is. We talked about it and we just wanted to put it on record that it will be moved. And you should go ahead and proceed with the renovations.
Steve, would you want to add to that for the foreseeable future? I don't think somebody coming in fifty years from now and saying, hey, as long as grass is green and.
Okay, for the foreseeable future.
You accept that amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Move forward.
You're welcome.
I have one other item on the agenda, which is the request, uh, to dispose of one of our vehicles. Uh, we, thanks to the highway department, they've assisted us with the highway, I'm sorry, the Gov.Dat deal, keep Gov.Dat deals. And so we've had quite a bit of luck on some of our former assets, so we would like to dispose of that vehicle, which, uh, it's into, it's beyond its end of life at this point.
So, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, committee report.
I'd just like to take this time to recognize, uh, Paul Ayers, who was, um, our county council for eight years and passed away just this past week. I can tell you, he was a man of strong faith. Um, he was a dedicated public servant and he was very devoted to his family and he'll, he will be missed.
Yes, he will. Commissioner Dillinger.
Uh, nothing.
I'll note that we're working toward the scoping agreement for the E-nine-one-one, um, EMA Childcare Project, which I think Connor will bring forward. Um, I'm very pleased with the working group we have and I think we made really good progress and we're keeping on track to get that thing built because we're out of room right now. Attorney.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I have a few things for you guys today. Um, first thing, Dennis Otten is here from Bose McKenna Evans for Resolution, Resolution zero-five-zero-eight-two-three, uh, one. And that's for the, uh, bond, bond anticipation notes for the Health County Redevelopment District for the Baker's Corner Project. Um, Dennis, you want to take them there?
Yeah, yeah, thanks Connor and good after commissioner, good afternoon commissioners. Good to see you all this afternoon. This resolution, as Connor mentioned, approves the issuance of bonds and bond anticipation notes by the Redevelopment Commission for the Baker's Corner Project and the amount I took, see twelve million dollars. And one of the statutory provisions of issuing those bonds is they have to be approved by the Redevelopment Commission, which they were on April twenty-eighth at their meeting. And then it has to come before the commissioners for approvals as well. And so that's what this for, the, the project is really contemplated to issue five-year bond anticipation notes to provide seed funding for the Baker's Corner Project. And they should, the other funding, ultimately with the idea that the regional district will take this over and issue its own bonds to take these bands out. I note also there's a reference in here to an interlocal agreement. Uh, the commissioners are not a party to it, but we just wanna, as a matter of transparency, have it on the record. That, uh, the bond resolution approves a form of interlocal agreement, um, and so we're, we're calling that out. The interlocal agreement is with the building corporation, the regional sewer district and the redevelopment district. Both the building corporation and regional district met this morning and adopted their resolutions approving the interlocal agreement. Uh, but without, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
The R E C adopted the interlocal as well, um.
If they're made.
To, yeah, one of, two.
So we have a fully executed interlocal agreement at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
It's been fully approved and it will, for final, final approval after its execution, will go before the county council. Uh, so we wanted to get, we'll have to get all the, we wanted to get it all approved before, at, at this, before council.
Okay. Good plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dennis.
The second item I have is, uh, Resolution zero-five-zero-eight-two-three-two. It is a resolution of the Health County Commissioners establishing the Hamilton County Indiana Audit Committee. That will be a committee that is, uh, three-person, person board. One has to be a CPA, one has to be a member of the legislative body, which is the commissioners. And the third is someone appointed by the commissioner or the executive that has understandings of, or basically understands financial matters that cannot be a county employee. And this is just the, the start of that committee going forward. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Or if not, it's for you guys, I have free approval here today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The third thing I have is a lease contract between the Health County Board of Commissioners and Lakeview Marine, uh, Inc. It is for boat storage for Four-H. Um, the, it is in amounts of, what's that, about fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, uh, fifty dollars, I believe. I think Susan might have left, but this happens every year, I believe. They're just a little late.
Same form of contract?
Yes, ma'am.
They need to accept the bid first and.
Oh, do they?
Is there a motion to accept the bids previously, the bid previously submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And is there? Okay. And is there a? Motion to accept the proposed contract for the lease for boat storage?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The next thing I have is the, uh, scoping agreement that Commissioner Altman mentioned for the nine-one-one, uh, the EMA Childcare B O T. This does take, um, this works through the scoping period all the way to one-hundred percent construction documents. And is in the amount of two million, four hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. I have that for your approval today as well.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Um, I just want to clarify that the engineering design fees goes through final docs. Does it also include any related items with respect to construction?
Uh, it does include, um, BW's, uh, the, the part of their development fee and a.
I think Laura's there. What, can you just verify, because that was a concern of Director Woods? That the fee that's proposed for services of design, et cetera, is an all-in fee?
Um, and it, it includes the survey, the geotechnical, environmental, um, the retention basin study. And some utility work or utility investigation through one-hundred percent CD, so.
So all in?
Yes.
So all in. What about during construction? Would that be a separate fee?
Those fees would be rolled into the box. So yes, our, um, CA fees would be rolled into the B O T.
Okay, so we would have no further fees other than what's included in what the guaranteed natural, natural price is?
Right. That would be, that would be rolled into the guaranteed max price. Right, that would be, that would be rolled into the guaranteed max price.
Okay, and just so we're clear on this, um, as we had our discussions last week, um, given the available funding, we thought it was best to go ahead and start this process through design for scoping and, and an estimate on the guaranteed maximum price to try to reduce our risk, um, and also to eliminate some of their carrying costs during this timeframe. So that's why it's a significant fee, but I, we will be able to walk away, if we can't make an agreement on the guaranteed maximum price, we will have a product built.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the, another thing I have is a scoping agreement between, uh, Health County and T W Consulting for the domestic violence shelter. This is not as full of a scope as the one you just approved, quite a bit less. Um, it is.
Mostly utility.
Mostly, yeah, most of the site development, some other things, and at that point they'll come back to us. Um, this fee is, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the, uh, last two items I have, uh, the first one is, uh, the district trustees met for the first time today for the Regional Utility District, and in our petition for that, it mentions that the trustees have staggered terms. Um, one is two years' term, and the two of them have four-year terms, and I was just, if you guys will make a motion that those, those terms will follow the current commissioners' election cycles.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last thing, and I apologize again for taking up so much of your time, uh, I Beach, uh, has been working with the surveyor's office on some sand volleyball courts in Westfield, Indiana. They have gone through the process, um, and they, um, I W, uh, or I Beach themselves received, uh, a bond, their, uh, construction team, Alp Construction, received one, and their design team did as well. They submitted it to the surveyor's office last week, and they improperly put the drainage board, they have corrected it, and they will submit it to you guys here in the near future, and so I ask for your approval, uh, for the president of the board of commissioners to sign that once we receive it, so they can move forward with their project.
Some of.
Second.
Uh, clarification, near future could be a lot of time.
Uh, I told them, uh, within, uh, this week.
That would be the nearest future.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is all, I apologize again for taking up quite a bit of time.
Well, you got a lot of work doing.
Yep.
No more slacking off.
None.
Moving on, Director of Administration, please.
Good afternoon, and I've got several things for you today. First off, I'm presenting for your review, approval, and signature, uh, by the Board of Commissioner President, uh, that would be you, Christine, a contract between Hamilton County and O R I dot net for the exchange of the use of twelve strands of the county's fiber optic cable in exchange for one, uh.
Gigabytes.
Gigabyte of internet bandwidth. Chris Mertens has negotiated the terms of this contract and indicates that it is a fair exchange that will provide a necess, a necessary, if not a cost-saving benefit to the county. Chris is here, if you have any further questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, I only have a question on the term of the agreement. How long?
It's a five-year term.
Five? Okay, I see fingers going up, but it's great.
It's, it's.
Well, it's to be reviewed, apparently, every three years.
It's, it's a five-year term with an agreement that after thirty-six months, they can look at it to make sure that the exchange is still a.
Okay, that's fine.
Market value.
Hundred and twenty bucks.
So pretty much, uh, you can pull the cord at three years if we're out of bounds or renegotiate?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, presenting for your review and ratification of approval, Enterprise Fleet Management Authorized Signer Form that designates Lee Buckingham, Director of Administration, as the authorized signer for Hamilton County for all Enterprise Fleet Management documents. This document designating me as the signer was electronically signed by Christine, uh, as the twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioner President on April twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three, and is coming before you today merely for the full board to ratify that decision.
Some of. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, uh, is presenting for your review, acceptance and signature, a Drainage Easement Dedication Document that Surveyor Kent Ward, uh, approached me about having you, uh, accept and sign off on. And I have that document for you right here.
This is the one in Lake Stonebridge.
Some of.
Second.
There's an attachment to it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item four on my agenda was covered by the.
I think we need to clarify the contract amount was thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah. For the record.
For the record. Thank you.
That was covered previously, and you'd signed it, uh, on Connor's agenda. Next item presenting for your information, um, I have information from the Hamilton County Assessor's Office regarding a printing error that apparently occurred on all of the notice of assessments of land and structure, structures and improvements that were recently sent out to all property owners. The error was not with respect to the individual assessments, but rather a typographical error that was not in the proofs that appeared on the assessments that went, uh, but did appear on the proof, excuse me, was not on the proofs, but appeared when the assessments actually went out, indicating that the sales, uh, time period that was used as the basis for the, uh, assessments was one one of twenty, of twenty twenty instead of one one of twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. They have put information on the, uh, website to announce and let the public know that that information was incorrect, but they have been getting calls, and they want to give you, make you aware of the situation in case you had inquiries or complaints or questions about it. Uh, they also, uh, want to let you know.
Is there, is that adequate with respect to disclosure correction? That's my biggest question.
Are they sending, have any, uh, notification?
I don't believe at this point in time there was any, uh, intention stated to send out revised assessments. The assessments themselves are correct, and they are, the assessments themselves are based on twenty twenty-two data. They just, the, the letter that went out indicates that it was based on twenty twenty data.
I know, but the question is, are they subject to prolonged, um.
Appeals.
Appeals because of the incorrect notice, because the purpose of the assessment letter is to start the forty-five day appeal process, and if we don't have adequate notice because of an error, then that, in theory, never goes away, that time limit. The other, the other thing I have, there's another way you notify people of assessments, and that's by just sending out the tax bill unless that law has changed. So in theory, this would be supplemental, I don't know why we would have sent, if we used those numbers.
Sure, and the tax bills went out couples, several, two to three weeks, it seems, approximately before the, this notice letter.
So I think let's table this item even there's no action, because I really think we need to know those answers.
Sure, and I think in the electronic version that I sent you, I attached an example of, of that, and I think Christine has.
I still don't understand how we.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, a lot of proof.
They wanted me to bring it to your attention, also, they indicated that they thought the bill for all of the notices that went out would ultimately come to you, and whether that was something we wanted to ultimately address with the printer, um, in the case. I have, I have that information also.
Let's put the, ask the auditor's office to watch for that bill during your normal cycle and pull it.
So which one of those?
It's on Vision.
Uh, printing was done by Vision Direct Printing. That's an event for all of the notices and assessments, and structures, and improvements.
I don't know whether it's a reassessment fund, or where it'd be earmarked to be paid, yeah.
Okay.
Lee, have we, is the assessor, when people file an appeal, is he sending them out a corrected notice of when the, the dates of the relevant assessments were, because if he doesn't, they're going to come into the appeal with the wrong information?
Sure. I know that, um, I don't know what he's done with respect to, or how many actual written appeals they've gotten, but these just went out about a week ago at this point in time. Uh, I know that when they're taking phone calls, they're advising the people to.
Let's, you and I and he meet, and sometimes, you set it up and called me later this week, and let's, let's make sure that we are minimizing the harm or potential harm to every extent possible, because if somebody comes in and they use that wrong date for basis of their appeal, then the C D B O board's going to get to here everything twice.
Right, right, right. A lot of.
At a much lower value, I presume.
Certainly, certainly the.
I'd rather have it based on, as a taxpayer.
Yeah, if their assessments were actually based on, uh, the twenty twenty figures, they would have been much happier probably with their current assessments.
Yes.
So. Next item on the agenda presenting for review, discussion, approval, and signature, uh, I have a proposed, a proposed proclamation regarding the one-hundredth homecoming of the descendants of the Roberts Settlement. Um, you, you were all involved in, I believe, an email exchange that was from Brenda Myers regarding this proclamation, if you want to, um.
I believe it'll be presented to them at their reunion, is that correct?
That is, the intention is to have it presented to them at their reunion, I believe. That was referenced as being on July first of, of this summer, twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
And who's presenting it?
At this point in time, no, no determination has been made, I think there's potential conflicts with multiple individuals' calendars. So I will work on making that determination between now and July first.
Okay.
I presented a proclamation to them three or four years ago, I'm not sure what that was for.
Well, they're embarking on some major improvements at the settlement, it's pretty exciting what they're doing.
It was, it was a fun day. I enjoyed it.
It might have been their last improvement, because they, they've been through it for years.
Yeah, but this is a walk they're doing, a history walk? It's really exciting.
Okay, next item presenting for review, discussion, and approval, I have a request from the Noblesville High School teacher Bethany Robinson requesting authorization to hold a jazz night on the square event with jazz music performed by the Noblesville High School Jazz Band. The request is to hold this event on the northwest corner of the square on the evening of Tuesday, May twenty-third of twenty twenty-three, between six and eight P M.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's on six, let's go ahead and do a formal approval of the proclamation or presentation at their reunion, is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, moving on to item eight, presenting for review, discussion, approval, a request from Noblesville Main Street to extend the hours of the already-approved Noblesville Street Dance, that's typically been an evening event, they're hoping to start that at noon time and have that be, uh, an event that takes place between noon and eleven P M. So they're asking for your approval to extend the hours, uh, for the event that was previously approved for evening time only. Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item presenting for review, discussion, and approval, a request from Lisa Charles to grant an extension to Robin Wilson to utilize thirty-seven point five hours of her unused P two O time for an additional thirty days beyond the ninety-day extension that was, um, already been approved for her. Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, uh, just a reminder, the Hamilton County Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs has its youth service awards presentation this afternoon at four fifteen here in the Commissioner's courtroom, you'll all be attending that and, uh, presenting some of the awards. Uh, next thing, fairgrounds, uh, now that you've indicated that, uh, you're conclusively moving forward with the plans on the fairgrounds current site, they have, uh, indicated they're going to have, or they've been planning to have, a groundbreaking ceremony that they'd like to invite you all to, it's going to take place on the first day of the county fair, I believe that's July twentieth of twenty twenty-three. No further details right now, but I just wanted to give you a heads up and get that on your calendars. And lastly, an item that, uh, was not on my agenda that I just got handed to about fifteen minutes ago, apparently not all of the vehicles that are owned by the county are owned currently under the, uh, Board of Commissioners title, and so, uh, I've been asked to present this vehicle sales agreement certificate to you to sign it, which will authorize Enterprise to sell a bunch of vehicles that have already been turned over to them, some of which are not currently titled in the.
The inventory.
Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Some of.
Second.
Discussion. And has anybody verified this stuff?
It was handed to me about five minutes before my presentation began. Um, Diana brought it to me, said that Shelby from Buildings and Grounds, uh, asked her to see if this could still be added to today's agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I think in the future, now that you've granted me authorization to be this official signer, I could probably sign off on documents like this in the future.
Well, let's just make sure everything Enterprise does is in our name, and then we won't have the issue.
Yep.
Lee, what time was that groundbreaking for the four H Fair?
They don't have a time.
I don't think they have.
No, no details yet.
It's just July first.
It's, it's scheduled for the first day, opening day of the fair, which I believe, no, not, not July first, July twentieth.
Twenty.
July twentieth.
The proclamation event for the Roberts Settlement is July first.
Thank you. Sure.
Uh, two things for you, just briefly, for informational purposes only, the contract with Live Nation is held up at their legal department, we hope to have that to you guys very soon, so hopefully by your next meeting. And then secondly, the main line for the sheriff's office has been down due to a porting issue since April the twenty-seventh. Uh, I know I S S is working really hard to get that done, but that is frustrating, to say the least. We do have an alternate number set up, and it is posted on our website, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Is there anything? I call in on that number, haven't tried, what do you get? Dead air?
Uh, that is a great question, it was, it was not ringing through when I called, it didn't really give you anything, but that's been a couple of weeks since I actually called it, so I, I don't know, I don't have the answer to that question right at the moment, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we getting more volume on nine one one?
If you guys know anybody that can make this happen, that would be fantastic, but I know Chris is doing everything in his power to make it.
Okay. Thanks. Auditor.
Yes, I've got a couple of things for you. Uh, first, I have a liability trust claim that we received after the packets were distributed, and so it was for six hundred dollars to my C O I, do you want to prove it, or?
I'm sure.
Sure.
Some of. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have acceptance and releases of bonds and letters of credit for drainage board.
Some of. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, next, I have the release of a capital asset.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we got one. I'm so impressed, thank you.
Well, hopefully it has the whole thing filled out before we did it, because I didn't see that.
Oh. Uh, next, I have liability trust monthly expenditures report for your approval.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll claims for your approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I have vendor claims for your approval.
Some of. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have?
Thank you. And it was, we sold it and has all the information.
Yay.
It's easier for everyone to follow. Thank you, Highway. You did it properly and completely. Did you sell that on Gov. Deals? That was your caterpillar paper.
Caterpillar paper was saturated, I believe.
Ah, yeah. Alrighty, we will retire to the back room 1A for a work session with Ms. Myers and then at 4:15, we'll have the Youth Service Awards with Monica Greer, which everyone is invited to attend also. Thank you for your interest and you're welcome to come back to the work session.